I will call the meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. I think we have one amendment to the agenda, Jerry?
Yes, thank you Chair Oxiger. We're going to ask that the that item number six A excellence at Ames be removed from this agenda. The individual who's going to be honored is not going to be able to be here today. So if the board would move to amend the agenda to remove item six A and then approve as amended.
Okay, so item six A will be deleted and B will become item A. Okay, thank you very much. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Move to approve the agenda as amended. I could add a motion?
We have a motion, a second to approve the agenda as amended, as amended. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. And that motion carries. Hey, public comment. Zach, do we have anybody for public comment?
Chair, Chair Oxiger, we skipped the consent agenda. I apologize.
I'm sorry. I forgot to present the consent agenda. So we'll back up a little bit. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the March first, two thousand twenty-three district board meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the March first, two thousand twenty-three district board meeting.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
And I have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And that motion carries. Okay, now Zach, do we have any public comment during that little interlude? Okay, thank you very much. We have no public comment, so we'll proceed with item six. A representatives to the board. First of all, Student Government Association, Danielle Irwin. Welcome Danielle.
Thank you. Greetings, esteemed members of the board, cabinet members, Chair Oxiger, Dr. Bornstein, and the Ames community. Once again, I am honored to be here and to share this time with you. Per usual, our student government and our campus activity programmers have been busy at work. On April sixth, SGA hosted our last town hall of the semester with over a hundred attendees. Students won prizes, received free burritos, and left phenomenal feedback that SGA looks forward to addressing. Yesterday, CAP hosted Ethan Fisher, former UNC basketball athlete, who shared his story about mental health, alcohol and substance abuse, and how choices and decisions that we make every day impact our futures. It was absolutely phenomenal. So if you didn't get a chance to to be there, we we apologize. It was it was a wonderful event. Tomorrow, CAP will be hosting Brittany Curry, Ames alumni and Paralympic snowboarder from eleven thirty to twelve thirty PM in the Welcome Center auditorium. Brittany Curry will speak about how she overcame obstacles such as her leg amputation and more to go on to win the silver medal at the Olympics in Seoul, Korea, in partnership with FTLC, H2H, CEI, DAS, and MarCom. This event is free and open to the community, so if your schedules allow it, please join us for an exciting event. On April eighteenth, CAP will be hosting the One Love Workshop from eleven AM to one PM in Student Commons Room one fourteen. This workshop allows students to gain awareness about sexual assault and teaches students about supporting the victims themselves and handling active situations. In addition to the event, on April twenty-sixth, please join fellow aardvarks and millions of people across the world for Denim Day. On this day, we will wear jeans to support survivors, raise awareness, and educate others about all forms of sexual violence. On April nineteenth, CAP will be hosting Walk for a Cause from nine AM to two PM on the Greeley Campus. Students and their loved ones are invited to decorate pins and to walk around the campus to spread awareness for a cause of their choosing. Information, resources, and food will be provided. On April twenty-sixth, CAP will also be hosting the Ideological Conditioning, the Shaping of Public Opinion, and the Holocaust: A Philosophical Perspective from eleven to twelve PM in Student Commons Room one fourteen. Ames Professor Daniel Alvarez will discuss how our approval of condemnation of war, violence, and injustice is often shaped by social forces operating beyond our immediate awareness. If you'd like more information about these events or would like to volunteer, please contact student activities at aims.edu. Another exciting opportunity I am pleased to announce is the connection between Ames and Blue Rising. For those who don't know, Blue Rising is a nonprofit organization whose main approach is to bridge the gap between those in pain and those in power. They build they build coalitions that include families that are impacted by or worried about high potency THC, fentanyl, gun violence, and other related issues by supporting them to share their experiences with policymakers and civic leaders in order to empower stakeholders, craft policies, and support their implementation to directly and comprehensively address the actual issues that limit opportunities for young people or cut their lives short. Last legislative session, Blue Rising was intimately involved in the development and passage of the fentanyl legislation that passed and was signed into law by Governor Polis. Specifically, Blue Rising organized and supported over fifty families that were involved in advocating for the passage of the bill to both share their stories and to advocate for changes that introduced the bill and that would meet the needs of the families. Blue Rising's priorities included five million dollar public education campaign that will come out of the AG's office as a result of the bill's passage, the inclusion of the OD map, the overdose map, which is a tool for local agencies, law enforcements, and institutions of higher education to educate the communities of potential fentanyl overdoses or poisonings, and the expansion of the bulk purchase fund for naloxone, among many other important items in the bill. Currently, Blue Rising has met with security and discussed the feasibility of adopting the overdose map for Ames Community College. Additionally, Blue Rising has supplied us with a fentanyl safety checklist for colleges and universities, which I I passed out a copy of that, so if you have any questions about that, please let me know. And currently, we are working through the checklist, and once completed, Ames would earn the fentanyl safety checklist designation. So really excited about that. I think this is a wonderful opportunity. I look forward to working with Blue Rising and connecting through the Well Trust. We can also earn some money to help implement these projects, so that's really exciting. But at this time, thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions of Danielle?
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for your work with this Blue Rising. I I think this is an incredible issue that we have in this country, as we all know. And I think it's important that we're addressing it aggressively and to do all we can to to mitigate that problem. So thank you for your work and all the people you work with, Danielle.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And once again, thank you for this wonderful opportunity, and I look forward to connecting in future months.
Okay, thank you again Danielle. Next is Ames Faculty Association. Julia, welcome.
Good afternoon. What a pleasure to be here. Chair Oxiger, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein and Dr. Rothamer, good afternoon. Extra, extra, read all about it. Ames Community College sensational faculty are making headlines citywide with their committed and creative efforts. We have book reviews. We have articles submitted for publishing, a book chapter in an anthology, a creative event that merges art, graphic design and music, a ripple recognition, reading to children, and promoting literacy to immigrant families. So without further ado, please allow me to share the good news with you today. So we're going to begin with our publications, exhibitions, or performances. And we have Jeff Moser, part-time writers' community coach, had two reviews recently published. The first review is entitled Continental England: Form, Translation, and Chaucer in the Hundred Years' War by Elizaveta Strachan. The next book review is Shadows of the Enlightenment: Tragic Drama During Europe's Age of Reason by Blair Hoxby. Next, we have Solani Flores, who is the professor of psychology, and she submitted an article to Wiley Publishing. Wiley Publishing has informed Dr. Flores that her article is a top-sided article in two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-three this year, and it has generated immediate impact and interest in the professional community. Furthermore, Jeff Moser, once again, part-time writers' community coach, has a book chapter in a new anthology about Shakespeare, The Sound and Fury of Macbeth, a tale signifying some things about self-fashioning, the art of drama, and Shakespeare himself. Also, we have Brian Dunning, professor of graphic design and rich media, used their program events to raise student awareness and participation outside of classes. This was accomplished with the Interdepartmental Creative Jam event on February the twentieth. The event was well-received, merging music, art, and graphic design, and it also created created a creative outlet for the students, staff, and faculty within the first four weeks of the semester. In addition, there will be another interdepartmental function to celebrate Pink Floyd's fiftieth anniversary by celebrating their music and providing art for a recorded event coming this May. We don't want to miss out on that, everybody. That sounds very exciting. Let's go ahead now and move on to conferences. So Jeff Moser, we have a pattern here. Part-time writers' community coach served as the chair and moderator of the session panel Science Fiction Literature and Film for the Seventy-Fifth Rocky Mountain Modern Language Association Annual Conference, Albuquerque, New Mexico, August thirteenth through the fifteenth of last year, two thousand twenty-two. Now, he also presented the following paper, Modern Literacy Theory, in the fiftieth anniversary of Isaac Afmoff's The Gods Themselves. All right, now that we've looked at publications, we have looked at conferences. We also have a fabulous ripple that I would like to share with you all. So this ripple was for part-time instructor Terry Devlin of computer science. Her student quoted, "I have taken two of Terry Devlin's courses over the past two semesters." I believe Terry makes a great nominee because of her attentiveness to her students, her willingness to work with her students, and the overall fun factor of her class. During the two thousand twenty-two fall semester, I had a pretty serious surgery towards the end of the semester, and Terry worked with me to make sure I would get my A as I was nursing myself back to health. Once again, hands, hands up, clapping for our supportive compassionate teachers. Moving on to community involvement, Shell Costello, professor of prep read in English, and her therapy dog Zeus, which I've had the privilege to meet, have been volunteering at children's reading events where children get to read to dogs. And unfortunately for the audience, I wasn't able to get pictures, but hopefully members of the cabinet, the board have seen these delightful pictures. And you know, I always tell my public speaking students, if you don't have a friend or someone to deliver your speech to, dogs and cats are great listeners. Furthermore, April McClure, professor of speech communication, had been working with one of her public speaking students, Grant Hall, who has applied and is competing for a small business grant at UNC. April coached Grant on his presentation skills, organizing and tailoring content, and making sure that he stayed within the time requirements. Well, yippee-ya-ay, April's efforts did pay off because Grant won first place in the two thousand twenty-three Entrepreneurial Challenge at UNC. Finally, once again, April McClure, professor of speech communication, and Megan Friesen, professor of English, visited the adult English classes held by the Immigrant and Refugee Center in order to enroll families in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library of Weld County. Thirty-six children were signed into the program and will begin receiving a free book each month until they are five years old. Additionally, Megan and April handed out free children's books to the enrolling families. And in total, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library of Weld County is sending a free monthly book to three thousand one hundred and forty-four children. So I hope you all have enjoyed listening to the good news today of our spectacular faculty. Thank you so much. And do you have any questions for me today?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Julia.
Thank you all so much.
Great presentation, as always. Next is Ames Staff Association, Ross Perkins. Welcome, Ross.
Thank you so much. Welcome to the board, Dr. B, friends and audience and online. I think we should have played hooky today. It's such a beautiful day out there. I got to be honest, it was one o'clock and I was sitting in the sun over at ECA, and luckily my phone went off and I was like, oh, I got to go, because it was such a perfect day to do that. I also apologize for my casual wear today. It's state testing week. And but I do have my ASA T-shirt on, so I feel like a win and a lose, or however you want to take it. So, well, first of all, thank you all so much for having me here again today. I'm super excited. We're, you know, getting close to the end of the semester, and ASA has a lot of great things going on, not only to wrap up the year, but also to kind of kick off next year. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Excuse me. The first thing I want to talk about are the ASA scholarships that we are working on. I want to first start by thanking Kelly Jackson in the foundation for helping us endow these scholarships. We have two scholarships that are a part of ASA, and that's the College for Kids scholarships that we do for staff members, employees here at Ames. We have two scholarships for the Greeley area campus, which includes ECA also, one for Fort Lupton, one for Loveland, and one for Windsor. We're looking to expand those in the in the coming years with this endowment. And so we have the application right now is on in the Ames Daily. So if you have any kids that are college for kids ready, sign them up. You can get a scholarship. And I want to think, oh, there's Kelly. I didn't see. You're usually behind me here, but I want to thank Kelly for that. So it is in the Ames Daily. I believe it was in the Ames Daily this morning. So you can check that out for the application process, like three questions to do that. So the second scholarship that's part of this endowment process is the scholarship for books for two students. And so we're continuing to work on that, and hopefully we can start expanding that in the next couple of years to really help with students purchase those books, especially some of those more costly books that are out there and stuff like that. So those are some of the things that we're working on right now and as we move into the next year and stuff like that. The second thing I want to do is thank Emily Russell and Cynthia Halligan. They came to our last meeting, ASA meeting, and did a presentation on compensation for staff members. So I believe it was the presentation that you all saw last time and maybe even today. But they did one specifically designed for staff members, and so that really allowed staff members to ask questions to Emily and really kind of just create some transparency in that process. And so it was really well attended. I think we had over fifty staff members attend. It was the largest meeting that we we have had in a few years. So I'm pretty excited about that. So big thanks for Emily and Cynthia for putting that together and coming and doing that. So we have one more ASA meeting next week, I believe, Tuesday next week. And this will be sort of our last meeting of the of the semester of the year, and it's really sort of the kickoff of our planning for next year. Our plan is to really plan out the entire next year, starting with this meeting, getting ideas from staff, what they want us to focus on, things like that, kind of getting some feedback. And then later on this summer, probably in after school in May, we're going to have a retreat where we're going to kind of plan out the ASA leadership team kind of next year and what we want to do and stuff like that. So we're super excited about that opportunity. That way we don't have to kind of do it as we move along through the year. We can kind of have it all set and everything. Okay? And the last thing I want to mention, I am going to have to look at my phone because I did not print this out. I want to take a moment to talk about the faculty chosen staff of the year. You may have saw, may have seen this in the Ames Daily a couple of days ago. I think it's been in a couple of times, but I want to take a few moments to recognize the ten or twelve folks that were nominated by faculty. So this is staff that was nominated by faculty, and there are some incredible people in this list. First is Vinnie Ogden, Heather Logan, Christopher Ross Perkins, who's that? I don't know. Ross Perkins, Karen Scarpella, Emily Nodder, Helen Verilla, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Ronnie Rydell, Nicole Cordova, Kimberly Johnson, and Megan Blazer. So those were all nominated, and Heather Logan won the faculty or staff, faculty chosen staff of the year. I think it sounds good. And that's all I have. So thank you very much, and congratulations to all those that were nominated. It's such an honor to do that. Any questions? Anybody want to go play hooky real quick?
Okay, well, Ross, thank you very much. If there's no questions, we thank you for your presentation.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Yep, you bet. Okay, next on the agenda is action items. First action item, seven A, compensation proposal fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And I think in lieu of the Chuck Jensen will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Bornstein, you have before you action item seven A, compensation proposal for fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four. Administration has reviewed and taken into consideration a number of factors and making a recommendation for an annual increase. And these, some of these factors include inflationary rate of eight point seven four, the Colorado minimum rate increase of eight percent effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, bringing the Colorado minimum wage up to seventeen dollars and twenty-nine cents, and unemployment rates are low and impacting our labor market. Some of the things I have also mentioned in our budget presentation earlier today during the work session, but as a college, we continue to see increases in some of our turnover. Our applicant pools are down, and position vacancies are taking much longer to fill. So due to this review, administration is proposing a two-step process to support the retention and recruiting efforts, as well as address the current cost of living environment. Two steps are being proposed, or two items are being proposed for compensation for next year. The first is a six point five percent base increase for full and part-time faculty, part-time students, or full students and full and part-time staff and full-time administrators. And then also a second component, a fifteen hundred dollar, one-time-only, non-base building payout to all faculty, staff, and administrators prorated for part-time. The fiscal impact is lined out in the action item is eight, seven, four point eight million. I get my numbers right here. And the administrative recommendation is to move to approve a compensation adjustment of six point five and a fifteen hundred dollar one-time, non-base payout prorated for part-time for fiscal year twenty-four. Myself and George Belinski will stand for any questions related to this action item. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Do we have any questions of Chuck? Marilyn, I think you have a question?
I do. It's more of a statement, just as a clarification on the fiscal impact under step one. I believe that's a comma, not a decimal point. On the three million, just as clarification and documentation.
Oh. You are correct, yes. So noted.
If we weren't talking numbers, I wouldn't worry about it, but under documentation, I think it's important.
So noted, three million five hundred and ninety-four thousand. Yes, thank you.
Good catch.
Very good catch.
So. Can somebody read that figure off to me so I read it correctly when I read the motion? Three?
Under, under step, under step one, three million five hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Five ninety-four. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, catches? Mark, did you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to compliment Dee's presentation on this last month. She did one of the best presentations on pay increases and whatnot.
Thank you. We'll pass that along to her.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much. I guess I call for a vote here. Do we have a motion? Do you have a motion to approve action item seven A, which is the compensation proposal fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four? And I will read that. A motion to approve compensation adjustment in two steps. Step one is a six point five base matrix increase, and step two, a fifteen hundred dollar one-time, non-base payout prorated for part-time for a total of three million five? Okay, four point eight million compensation adjustment. Okay, that's what I didn't want to mess up, and I did anyway. Do I have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the compensation adjustment as presented.
Okay, and out of the cloud. Okay, thank you, Gene. Appreciate that. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Can I second that, please?
Okay, we have a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, Gene. Motion carried. Okay. Great job. Okay, thank you, Chuck. Next is item B. Health and dental insurance benefits fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. And again, Chuck will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Bornstein, you have before you action item seven B, health and dental insurance benefits for fiscal year twenty-three dash twenty-four. As we all know, Ames participates in the comprehensive health and benefits plan that is developed and managed by the State Board for Community Colleges and Occupational Education. We, along with the thirteen community colleges across the state, make up that group. For fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, there will be small plan changes, and no other plan, you know, that'll be affecting the plans. Premium for medical benefits will see a five percent increase for the our Antheum plans, and an increase of five point four for our Kaiser Plan, resulting in twenty-five dollars or less in monthly premiums increases for employees. Currently, Ames provides a hundred percent coverage for employees only tier and eighty-five percent coverage for plus children, spouse, and family coverage. The administrative recommendation is to recommend a motion to maintain coverage for employees only tier at a hundred percent and coverage for plus children, spouses, and family tiers at eighty-five eighty-five percent for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Mr. Chairman, stand for questions myself, for George Belinski.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Any questions? No questions? Okay, hearing none. And entertain a motion to approve action item settlement B.
I so move that we approve action item seven B.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve action item seven B. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good job. Action item seven C, distinguished fellow award, and presenting this is trustee Heidi Wendell. No, you can do it there if you'd like.
Okay, first off, I'd like to say I was very honored to serve as chair for this important committee. I'd like to read just a little bit about this award. Distinguished Fellow Award is granted by Ames Community College in recognition of outstanding Distinguished Fellow Award is granted by Ames Community College in recognition of outstanding service to the college. Annually, the Board of Trustees may recognize extraordinary commitment, allegiance, and contributions by individuals to the mission, vision, and values of Ames Community College by naming them as distinguished fellow. This committee selects and recommends one of the nominees to receive this award based on the following criteria. Longstanding efforts to advise, to advance the goals and purpose of Ames Community College and our higher education. B, the championing or supporting of students' learning and service. C, significant contributions to the furthering of scholarship in the state, county, community, or mission of the college. D, served as an outstanding example to the employees and students of the college. E, possesses high level of character integrity, professional expertise and leadership. F, enhance the reputation and relationship of Ames Community College with its service area. The distinguished fellow award committee is very pleased to unanimously, excuse me, endorse Robert Waltman as the twenty-two, three distinguished fellow. Mr. Waltman served as a faculty member at Ames for forty-three years and represented Ames with honesty, integrity, unyielding kindness, and generosity in knowledge and teaching. His nominator added that Robert has had a significant and lasting impact on nearly every photographer in northern Colorado. And Robert would be the last person to recognize or see himself deserving this award. He views all his amazing contributions as merely part of the job.
Wonderful. Any questions of Heidi? Well, thank you for that presentation and that recommendation. So we will need a motion and a second to nominate and select Robert as the distinguished fellow. Heidi, would you like the honor of making the motion?
Oh. I would so move that we select Mr. Waltman.
And do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, that motion carries. And congratulations to Robert for being selected as the distinguished fellow. And thank you, Heidi, for your chairing that committee and doing such fine job of selecting this year's recipient. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda. Item eight A. Information items. And for that one, I'm going.
Yes, sorry, Chuck, we should have seventy.
Gary, I need to talk to you about this.
Yep.
There it is. Okay. Action item seventy, October board meeting date changed. Jerry, I'm going to turn that over to you.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. This item is coming to light because the ACCT Annual Conference is going to be held on October the ninth through the twelfth in Las Vegas, Nevada. And to ensure that we have an adequate quorum at the October board meeting, as well as good attendance at the ACCT Conference. We will be asking the board to move the date that was previously approved for the October board meeting. So currently, the October board meeting is scheduled for October the eleventh at the Windsor campus. And the administrative recommendation is that the board move to change the October board meeting date to October the fourth in twenty-twenty-three. It will still be at the Windsor campus. They still have availability there. So we're just asking the board move that. If you need to confirm on your calendars right now, you're certainly welcome to do that as well before you approve it.
Hey, do we have any questions about this? Anybody have any conflicts? I'm sorry. Do you have a conflict? Okay, you can resolve it. Okay, appreciate that effort. Okay. Well, if everybody is in concurrence, I'm not hearing from the cloud. Gene, is that date okay with you?
That works for me.
Okay, thank you, sir. We entertain a motion to change the October board meeting to October fourth.
Move to change the October board meeting to October fourth.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to change the October board meeting to October fourth. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. That motion carries. Okay, item eight. Formation items, events, calendar, and upcoming work session agenda items, Jerry.
Yes, thank you, Chair Oxiger. All right, in your packet, you will find Board of Trustees' calendar of events. And we'll take a little bit longer with this item than we typically do because we have Celebration Week coming up. So I wanted to go through those items and confirm with the board if, which events you'll be able to attend, since we do hope that we have at least one board member at each of these events. So if you have your calendars with you, if you wouldn't mind pulling those out to check on those, and we'll just kind of go through one at a time, and I'll let you know who I have so far. And then if anybody else would like to add their names to the list, we can do that. So the first event for Celebration Week is the Police Academy graduation on May the fifth at two P M. over at the Windsor Campus. So far, I don't have any board RSVPs. I do have for Maryland attentive, but no official RSVPs there. Two P M. on May fifth. Okay, so I've got Mark. Sorry, trustee out. I think I knew that. Okay, thank you, Chair Oxiger. All right. And Gene, it sounded like that was you trying to chime in as well?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll put you down, Gene. Thank you. All right, the next event is the President's Reception on May the eighth at three thirty P M. here at the Welcome Center. Right now I have Marilyn as an RSVP. And I have trustee Wendell. And Chair Oxiger.
Yes, for me, Jerry.
Thank you, trustee O'Hara. At, at three thirty. Yep. Yep, yeah, it is. Perfect. All right, the next, the next one is one that came in after the packet, so I will up some details for you here. This is for the Center for Diversity and Inclusion graduation celebration event. That one is going to be on May the ninth at five thirty P M. Okay, trustee Wendell. That one is going to be in the Student Commons Lobby.
You can mark me down for attendance too, Jerry. Please.
Thank you, trustee O'Hara. All right.
Jerry?
Yes.
Clarification, does that cross over with the med prep penning?
Yes, thank you for catching that trustee shock. Yes, it does. It does conflict with the med prep penning. They will occur at the same time. And that's the, the next event listed here, so I'll cover. So I'll go ahead and cover that next one here as well. The med prep penning is the same day, May the ninth. It's going to be here in the Welcome Center, and it's going to be at five thirty P M. as well. And we have Marilyn, we have Marilyn attending that one. Sorry, trustee shock. If nobody else, we'll go ahead and move on to the academic honors ceremony on May the tenth at eleven thirty A M. here at the Welcome Center. Okay, trustee Wendell.
You put me as tentative, Jerry, and I'll let you know.
Yep, I can put you down, trustee shock. The next event is the nurses' penning on May the eleventh at one P M. here in the Welcome Center.
I will try to come. I have a conflict.
So. Thank you, trustee shock. I'll put you down as a tentative for that. You have any other interest in the nurses' penning before I move on?
Put me down for a possibility. If I'm back in town, I will come.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. All right, next is the graduate dinner, also on May eleventh at six P M. here in the ballroom. Right now I have down trustee Wendell and then trustee shock is tentative. Any other interest?
Yeah, mark me down for attendance, Jerry, please.
Perfect. Thank you, trustee O'Hara. All right, and then, of course, we have commencement. So I, I assume that everyone will be able to attend that. If you will not be able to attend commencement on May the twelfth, we have a noon ceremony and a five P M. ceremony, please let me know. But I assume all five of you will be able to join. And the last item is the Fire Academy graduation on Saturday, May the thirteenth at eleven A M. over on the Windsor Campus. If anybody able to attend that. Thank you, Chair Oxiger. All right, and if any plans change between now and then, or if you find you're able to go to an event that you haven't RSVP'd for yet, please email me and let me know, and I'll get you on the list. And that will conclude this item. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. I appreciate that very much. Next on the agenda is item nine, CEO President's Report, Dr. Bornstein.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger, members of the board. Details of department division highlights are in your packet as per usual, and cabinet members are available to answer any questions you might have of those. We have two more focused presentations for you today. The first is Dr. Ailer, Vice President of Academic Affairs, is going to present academic program feasibility and review and viability. This is a report that the board has asked for twice a year just to understand what programs are being considered, where other programs are in the process and, and moving forward. So, Dr. Ailer.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, Chair Oxinger, President Bernstein, and cabinet members. There are two components. I'll wait for a second here. Two components to today's report. The first is new program feasibility inquiries, and then that'll be followed by a review of established programs. So we have several program feasibility inquiries from November of last year to April of this year. Spanish certificate has been closed. American Sign Language Certificate is still being researched for implementation, potential implementation. Certified laser technician is still in the research play phase. Data scientist analytics is being developed. Veteran veterinary technician is being researched, and restoration ecology technician has been closed. Yes.
Would you just clarify what closed means?
Yes, closed means that we determined not to open that particular certificate. Okay, in program review and viability. This is established programs that go through our internal review process. The annual cycle was completed last November. We held listening sessions, as you see with deans, chairs, programs, directors in December to ask for feedback on the timing of this process and the process itself. And then we've had initial conversations and brainstorming about creating some high-level program review metrics that summarize overall results for each program. In the annual cycle, every program team reviews their data and create, and their program data dashboards, and they write a narrative that includes the strengths of their programs, the challenges and opportunities facing those programs, and then the goals that they have for programs moving forward. In the sixty-eight programs that were reviewed in the last cycle, one hundred and thirty-three goals were created. We put a couple of examples here so you can see what those look like. One is industrial tech and energy studies to increase connections with high school students. And so they are adding concurrent offerings in three school districts and hand-on, hands-on events with area middle schools. Another example, the English department is working on their assessment processes and program review processes. And they've established a norming sessions for grading essays in English ten, twenty-one, which is the first-year composition course. This is one of the best practices in the field of grading essays is to pull people together. So this is full-time, part-time faculty and making sure that everybody is using the same criteria and applying it in, in a similar fashion so that the results of that are consistent. And we're helping all the students equally who are going through that process. So that's a couple of examples of program goals and results. In terms of the listening session results, we got some feedback on the timing of the process. Data dashboards are typically prepared in June and in mid-July. The, they're distributed to the program directors and program chairs. From July to September, the analysis is being done, reviewing data, creating narratives. Convocation Day does fall in, in this timeframe, and, and we try to have people together and be able to have some additional conversation on those days. In October, the deans review this work. And then we're proposing for the next cycle that we're going to look at in November, the Assistant Vice President Academic Affairs Review and prepare some overall high-level summary data on all the program reviews. And then December will integrate that with other processes. The feedback on the process of program reviews, excuse me, have two or three slides on this. These, this is current dashboards contain this information, enrollment, retention, credit hours, number of degrees certificates, student demographics, course-taking behavior by modality. Excuse me. Grade breakdowns, number of full and part-time faculty. There were some requests from the deans, chairs, and, and directors to add some additional information to this process. So we are looking at that adding potentially program costs, faculty-student ratios, the common learning outcome assessment results, class scheduling in terms of frequency, timing modalities, marketing plans for the various programs, and then some discussion of what's going on around the state in this discipline so that we can position ourselves appropriately to external trends. There are some components that were specific to CTE programs and some specific to the general education program review process. These are in the chart here, CTE, job placement, environmental scanning from advisory groups, employment outlooks, pass rates, salary outlooks in the general gen ed area, transfer rates, completion rates after transfer, sequencing data, and then looking at courses that serve everybody, excuse me, in all degree programs, and some that serve specific students in a particular department's program. What we're planning to do for our next steps is the academic What we're planning to do for our next steps is the Academic Affairs Leadership Team will be having a retreat this summer, and we're going to look at the process timeline to make sure that, you know, we have the data that's been requested. We're going to continue to have conversations with chairs, directors, deans, senior leadership about what that high-level summary data should look like and what we want to include in that so that it's clear, not overly complicated, and, you know, ready for sharing with other audiences. And part of this conversation will also be making sure that we're aligning this program review process with other processes such as accreditation requirements, the finance process for proposing things for the next year's budget, evaluation processes, development of course schedules, and so on, that we believe we can integrate all of those conversations into a single process and make it a little bit more productive and easy for the people doing that work. Do you have any questions?
More of a comment, and I think based on, and I think this is where this goes, but you can correct me if not, if wrong. I think when we look at it, or when the information comes to this group in the approval process and learning what's been done, I think what would help for me and is more of a standardized template. When we look at all of the kind of comment, and that's with my questions that I came back to today, is all of the different components that I think are important for moving forward with the proposal after the information's done. And so whether it's a standard template that's used on all of those that come through the board of being able to walk through that information, I think it would help. I think we look at them so differently and then trying to figure out, does it have all the different information that we need? And so I would just recommend a template that when it comes forward with that information and the information behind it to be able to read easier.
Thank you.
Can I just respond to that for, or just kind of have a bit of a conversation? So it might be helpful, once we create a template for the board, to then bring it back to the board to make sure it has the pieces of information that you want to make sure are consistent when the board reviews any new certificate or degree. Does that make sense? Okay.
Just to add, kind of somewhat to what Marilyn mentioned, you know, having some of the data to support the move in that direction as far as the number of career opportunities, maybe a base salary, similar to what you presented with the drone program, that different, different skill sets are available for 24 credits and pay income level of X to Y. Those are very interesting. It's good to hear some of the rabbit holes you're going down in middle schools in K-12 education, because that's the best place to grab a hold of some of these individuals and move them along and keep them in eddings and through their career opportunities and graduating that way. So I'm real excited to hear about that. It's kind of what I've been waiting for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
A nice presentation. So I think I just need to understand more. So everyone, you have a process where everyone reviews all the educational programs. Is that correct? And then you go through all the, that's a lot of work.
Well, yes, it is, but that's what we need to do to make sure that the programs are current, that if the field is changing, that we're making modifications because we want to stay ahead of what employers need and what transfer institutions are looking for so that our students are competitive and well-positioned when they leave us.
And I do like your dashboards that you folks present. They're wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The other, the other thing to just add on, when you have all this information that's read on at a high level way to look at it, so you're looking across, it gives you, I believe, the foundation and opportunity to reach into businesses and grab ahold of some extra funding and and maybe support some of those programs directly or indirectly as the, as needed for those industry folks.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ailer. The next focused presentation in the president's report was a topic that was raised, I believe, at the last board meeting about retention and completion updates. So Erin Prestwich, who's the Assistant Vice President of Student Engagement, Inclusion, and Success, worked diligently over the last month to put together some information for you. So Erin, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxinger, members of the board, and Dr. Bernstein and campus colleagues. It's good to be with you this afternoon to talk about some of our retention and completion numbers. Wanted to share just a few introductory comments before we go through the data slides. First, I wanted to acknowledge Jeff Adcock, who I've partnered with and collaborated with to pull together some of this data, and I have, Jeff is on Zoom in case I need to phone a friend for questions about some of the data, and always appreciate working with Jeff and, and some of the resources that he has with all of our different types of data. And then also Scott Reichel. So Scott is my partner on crime on the guided pathways work. And a lot of the data that I'm going to share is from the dashboard that we have from Tableau that's available to anybody. And then some of the data is actually core measures that Scott and I have developed in order to try and track our guided pathways work. And so I've worked with Scott as well on some of this data and always appreciate his collaboration and his efforts on our retention and completion work, too. Also, just wanted to acknowledge, when we talk about retention and completion, we have so many people across the college that have been and continue to be working so hard to support our students and to ensure that we're doing everything that we can to help our students stay and complete their, their desired certificates and degrees. And just wanted to acknowledge that there's so much work that goes on across the college and so many different departments to, to help our students to be successful. One of the things that I've noticed when I went through the data is some of the things you'll see is encouraging. Some of the data is, is reflective of that work that we're doing, and is good to see. Some of the data that we'll see is kind of typically what you would expect to see at an open enrollment community college institution. And then some of the data is, you know, helps us to continue to be motivated, to always strive for continuous improvement to see how we can continue to get better. There was, I promised Jeff that there was one clarification I would make on the previous enrollment report from fall. So in the data that I shared, I shared that 50% of our students in the fall were students of color. And that is accurate, but it needs to have the caveat shared to it that that's for the iPads student population, which is first-time, full-time students. So in the fall, the iPads student population was 50% student of color. For all student populations, regardless of student type, our students of color percentage was 43%. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. All right, so I have 10 slides of data to share. Again, some of this is actually public. You can find it on our data dashboard. IRNA Institutional Research and Assessment has developed a fantastic dashboard through a platform that's called Tableau that's available for anyone to go and look at some of our retention and completion data, and it's really cool stuff and interesting stuff to actually go and look at. There is a lot of data that we could share, but I wanted to keep it simple and start with these 10 slides. So the first data point that we're going to look at is our one-year retention rates of our degree-seeking students. And so this includes, these two visuals here actually represent the same data sets just kind of displayed in different formats. These are degree-seeking college-level first-time students. So when you look at the 2017, 2018 cohort of students, we broke it down by certificate students and then also associate students. I think it's important to note that because certificate students obviously have a shorter-term plan to completion. So this is any student who was retained over the course of a year or who graduated in the course of that year. You can see, you'll see a common, you'll see a commonality over the next few slides in that 2019 and 2020 year, and that, of course, is our COVID cohort. And across the country, we saw that not all students returned, and we see a little bit of a dip there, and then we see that kind of starting to bounce back in some areas. So this is the differences between our certificate and associate degree students. This is our first-generation students. So you'll notice that there really isn't a large statistical difference between first-generation and non-first-generation students. And I actually think this is really encouraging to see. In fact, our first-generation students are actually retaining and staying at a higher rate than our non-first-generation students. So I think this is actually a really unique thing and a cool thing and a success point. We know that first-generation students have unique challenges that non-first-generation students don't have. And the fact that our first-generation students are actually retaining at a higher rate is pretty significant. This wasn't the case until actually about the 2017, 16, 2017 year, we started to see a flip, and it's, it's, it stayed like that. And so that's really cool to see. The next one is our students of color. Again, not a significant difference. I think one of the things that stuck out to me on this slide is, again, that COVID year of 2019, 2020, that actually had a larger impact in terms of retention rates for our students of color than our, than our non-students of color. Non-traditional students. So we see in, in 2020 and 2021, I'm hoping that this is an anomaly. Of course, we track these data over the course of each year, so we see how we're progressing. Again, we have a dip in the COVID year, which impacted all student types across the board. And then something happened in that 2020, 21 year with traditional students, actually, where they didn't retain at, at as much of a rate as our non-traditional students. And some of this data, sometimes we see it kind of surprises us. We're not exactly 100% sure just at first glance what's going on here. And so some of the stuff, we'll try to look more into to kind of see what's going on. Before I move on to the next slide, is there any questions about those retention numbers?
When you say one-year retention, that would be fall semester to spring semester they completed.
It actually would be fall to fall or spring to spring.
So they came back in the fall? So it's not a two-year. Observance on associates, am I correct?
Yeah, so if the cohort started in the, for the students that started in the fall, there, if they were retained for one year, it means that they were coming back the following fall.
Did they come back?
Yeah, yeah. And then if they started in the spring, then their one-year retention rate would then be the following spring.
So do we have those that start in associate's program information and finish it? I guess that would be the retention. The certificate side pretty handily, because those are usually one-year courses, or, you know, in that respect. That's very good, very good numbers there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm understanding your question. Yeah, would you?
Degree takes two years.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I, you know, that would be the retention format that yields graduation.
Correct.
Okay. A one-year format of that doesn't show me the second year.
So that would be, I think what you're asking for is maybe what the completion numbers of those students are, which we'll get to in a few slides. Yeah, this is just, so of course, you know, retention is one of our strongest leading indicators of whether or not a student is going to complete. And so looking at one-year retention rates is a common data point that schools will look at. So I'll show you the completion numbers here in a minute.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the retention numbers? So another leading indicator that we look at from a retention and completion standpoint is math and English gateway course. This actually shouldn't say pass rates. There, I actually misrepresented this. This is completion rates. So this is the percentage of students who, in their first year, completed their gateway math or gateway English course. So pass rates are going to impact that. But the other thing that's going to impact this number is just enrollment in English and math. So one of the reasons this is really important is there's a lot of research out there that shows that the sooner students take and pass their gateway math and English courses, it's actually a leading indicator for their continued retention and completion. And so there are two things that'll impact this. Whether or not students take math or English course in their first year, and then, of course, whether or not they actually pass that. So this is not actually pass fell rates. This is completion, whether they took it and then whether they completed it. Trustee Wendell.
I'm really interested in the spring 2022, that the English went down and the math went up. And what is, have you talked about the assumptions?
Yes, we have looked into that. And I actually spoke with Dean Reichel about this yesterday. So there's some work that we're doing to basically get back to trying to improve that. So again, one of the things that could be impacting that is that students didn't, they didn't take their introductory math or English course as often as they did the previous year. And then another thing that would be impacting that is that then those students, whether or not they pass those classes or not. So one of the big things, I'm, I'm actually going to read what Dean Reichel kind of commented on this. So one of the things that he said that they're working on is co-requisite, co-requisite development. So if you're familiar with the co-rec model, students come in and they're not academically ready to take math or English. We have a co-rec model where they can take a remedial course or a developmental course and take their co-rec math or English course. So that's really helpful because then they can kind of take them at the same time, and it delays the amount of time that they then go on and take their math or English course. So that's one thing that's been really helpful.
Have to pay for a course that, you know, well, they need it, but it's concurrent with both one course.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah.
One course, one fee.
It is one course together.
Yes, thank you.
It's actually a course together. Ames Math Faculty has piloted a co-requisite course for college algebra that began in the fall of 2020 and a co-requisite pairing for statistics in fall of 2022. These courses have the potential to reduce the time barrier and improve course success rate. And then finally, the co-requisite pairing for English comp has been in place for a number of years, so our challenge is to encourage more students to take advantage of it. This is a three-credit co-requisite. So there are things that we're continually striving to do to improve these rates. And so I think between a combination of our advisors continually encouraging students to take math and English right out of the gate, and then our math and English departments, you know, supporting these students, we're hopeful that we can kind of get these back up. Yeah. The other thing that we see, too, is again, so we see this little bit of a dip in one semester. Again, it's, it's a, it's a time shot of one moment in time. And we have to kind of see as the semesters progress how we continue to do. Yeah.
Excuse me, Erin, what, another question. These, it's a combination of both concurrent and, and students on, on campus.
So for this one, this is all students who take regardless of modality, student type. This is all students who took their math and English. Yeah, this is all first-time students.
Was that in the other slides as well prior?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So now we're going to get into the completion rates. So these are essentially graduation rates. I'm going to share the graduation rates for all students, and then we'll look at certificate students, and then we'll look at transfer AAAS students. So these are our three-year graduation rates for all degree-seeking students. So you can see kind of year by year how we're progressing. So you can see kind of year by year how we're progressing. These are our three-year completion rates for all CTE students. And then this is for students that are in transfer programs. So at first blush, we'll see that these are not as high as we would like. Um, I also would say. You might be surprised by this, but this is this is not uncommon for a a community college. So one of the things that it's important to look at is this is a three-year completion rate. So we have a lot of part-time students who take more than three years to complete. Three-year completion rate is a is a common data point. Um, it's what a lot of um like iPads will go off of. And and other completion notes ago, it's called a hundred and fifty percent completion rate. So this will increase as we start to look at the four-year completion rate or the five-year, six-year completion rate. Um, the other thing that we that's important, I think, to take a look at this is that not all students actually who are. Who are transfer in a transfer program, they don't all stay with us until they complete. Sometimes they'll come. Take some hope, you know, um, take some. Um, core education courses for a year and then transfer. And sometimes they, of course, sometimes they do tran- they stay with us and get their AA or AAS and then transfer. But sometimes they transfer before. And then this is just a visual. Same data as the three previous slides, but just in one single shot. So you can see. How we're tracking with CTE students. Then with our transfer students and then the combination of all of our CTE and transfer students. Any questions about the completion data?
Yeah, do you have like a a top ten or top twenty list of reasons why students? Um, that's a rabbit holeers.
Yes, so there certainly is not a silver bullet way to improve retention and completion rates. Um, there certainly are. A lot of best practices. There's a lot of research out there. There isn't just one or two or even three things that will. Uh, improve retention and completion. I will say, there is a lot of things that our institution has done. Um, according to the trends that we're seeing, so like addressing mental health needs, uh food insecurity. Um, I I could continue to go down the list to talk about some of the things that we've done in in tutoring and the learning commons to offer more tutoring to students. So it's that would be a. How to improve retention and some of the things that we're doing as an institution would be difficult for me to summarize in a couple seconds.
No, I understand that, but maybe I can clarify my question a little bit. It's, you know, is it a monetary reason? Is it a healthcare needy? Need, lost my job, a lot of different things. There's kind of.
Yes, yes.
Yes, all of, and you can't fix everyone, nor can you circumvent. It's just. These these ten reasons seem to be the major reasons, and the rest of them disfall for whatever reason. And, you know. You know, the these aren't necessarily bad numbers. These are kind of average numbers is what.
Yeah, when we benchmark ourselves against other institutions, in some areas we're higher than others, in some ways, you know, we're. A a average in what you would expect. But yes, to your point, there's all kinds of things that impact retention. Um, and we're always striving to work on those things. So I think this is one of the last ones that I have. Yep, it is the last one that I have. So this is the average number of credits that students accumulate to earn an AA. AAS. Um, or AS degree. So the average number it's taking students when they complete basically a transfer degree. The reason that we like to take a look at this one, the reason this is important, because. We know that the more credits students take that they don't need. That go towards their degree, the longer it takes them to complete. The less likely they are to complete. And then the more debt that they accumulate. So. Of course, we're always encouraging students to take the classes that they need that go directly towards their major. Um, and there's a few considerations that we can. Take a look that impact this. So one is is that. Um, students change their major. It does happen. When students come, uh, they don't always know exactly what they want to take, and it's not uncommon for them to change their major. When that happens, it changes their degree requirements and and they end up having to essentially take extra credits that weren't. Counted towards maybe their second or third or even sometimes fourth major that they selected. Um, so that sometimes uh impacts it. And then sometimes students will come and they'll select the major by exploring. Programs and just kind of taking different classes to see what they might be interested in. And so that that could impact some of that. So there's other factors that might impact this as. Oh. There's other factors that might impact this. There we are. Um. But. Essentially, the reason why we're looking at this one is because again, it's like as much as we can try to get this number down closer to sixty, we'll never get to sixty. It's just not realistic, but the closer we can, the better it is for students. And actually, this is one where. You know, we've had kind of some up and downs, but we're actually overall, we're tracking in the right uh direction on this one. Trustee window.
Um, first off, I want to thank you for putting this together. This is really nice information. Um, I noticed on um the last slide that credits earned go. Analyze twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two. Will you be able to come up with the graduation rates for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one soon?
I did not even see that I had missed that. Yes, I just missed that some.
Well, it's it's okay.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, we'll have that somehow. I skipped a year. Yeah. Yeah. And it's. What's probably more likely is that that last one is a typo. My guess is that that last column is probably fall two thousand twenty-one. Yeah. But I'll go back and check.
This last slide is very interesting because I didn't realize they would take almost a third more. Classwork could may. Potentially would need, but. It happens.
It's a it's a common thing that occurs at community colleges. Um, there's been all kinds of research that's been done around excess credits. And how it impacts students and um again, students. Student choices impact that. Um, but there there are some things that we can help to influence that.
Excuse me, I think four-year institutions have the same problem called fifth year.
They do, yeah, they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, and just for your information, the college has a strategic enrollment management team, which also includes retention. Uh, and just beginning of the semester, um. That team engaged Noel Levitt's, a national, well-known national firm focused on enrollment and retention to do an audit. Uh, and also for your information as well as I'm sure others. No surprise, we might end up seeing, you know, a focus on enrollment and retention in our next strategic plan to get to. Um, trustee, how you were saying, there there really isn't a silver bullet. However, there's always more we can do, right? So. Um, I wouldn't be surprised if in our next strategic plan, we see some objectives specific to those areas of how we can really. Um, drill down into that. So just a teaser. Uh, just the last part of the president's report, we have the employee report. Um, so if there are any supervisors in the audience. You would like to introduce new employees, if you'll make your way up to the podium and just go ahead and start a line. Um, we will go ahead and. Do that. Okay, Rhonda, it looks like you might be the only one.
Aaron's a little taller than I am. Good afternoon. I'm Rhonda Johnson, Director of IT Network and Telecom for Ames. I have the pleasure of introducing Jeff Lemons. He is our. Um, network administrator too for the information technology department at Ames. He's been with Ames since late February. He came to us from Frontier Academy where he was director of IT. His job responsibilities include the care, feeding and growth of our wired and wireless networks, both between and within all the campuses. And setup of network devices and services in our new buildings. So please join me in welcoming Jeff.
Chair Oxiper, that concludes the president's report. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bornstein, uh, and thank you for the presentations I've received today. Uh, there's a lot of uh information um. Uh, in our packets that wasn't presented here today. Um, I think it uh it's always interesting to go through that. Uh, there's a lot of information and people, they uh put a lot of effort into uh to making these presentations for our. Information, so um enjoy a little light reading. Okay, well, thank you. Um, next on the agenda is um reflections and comments from board members about Ames. What would any anyone, what would you all like to say about Ames? Heidi.
Well, Ames overall is, once again, is amazing institution, and I'm really happy that. We were able to pass the compensation and benefit package because you guys are what makes this this place. Rock and roll. Um, so I'm I'm just very thankful. And Danielle, I think you do such a great job with the students. Um, the student government and appreciate this checklist and that you're trying to improve. Everyone's lives. Um, so. Ames is just great. You guys are growing. Everyone's. Meeting new challenges and always trying to improve. So I want to say thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Heidi. Marilyn?
I would echo on the compensation and benefits package. I I think it's a sure way of. Recognizing the team, the entire campus. Um, of what you do and the importance for retention and maintaining the high-level. Um, staff, faculty, administration, cabinet, everybody. Um, and how important that is to the success and ongoing success of the college. Um, and and then I'm going to call it Ross, Julia and Danielle as well, the energy. Um, thank you. It it's always fun to hear what's happening at the different levels on the campus and. Um, I appreciate the energy, so thank you. And in my world of healthcare, I. Recognizing, I think, that mental health and our um addiction and substance abuse, um difficulties within our communities. I think we all have to be on board as this isn't something we can't talk about and create systems. Thank you for moving forward.
Thank you, Marilyn. Mark, do you have anything to say?
I I'll add to what Marilyn said, what what you guys, what everybody's doing to recognize those those issues, you know. Statistically, one out of five of us deals with some sort of disability. Help me. We have Narcan in each one of our vehicles, just in case we see something really crazy going on that we maybe can help. Uh, my office, my business office is down by um. And that the cold weather shelter and there's challenges there, you know, and those 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 individuals need support and help and. Encouragement as needed. And um what we do with, and I wanted to thank Aaron, I'll switch over. Thank you for this stats, numbers. The numbers that we we are looking at, they're kind of normal. And if we can get two to five percent more or ten percent more, that might only be three to eight points, but it's it's important that we can help those students. Because that's what we're here for. You know, it's about our community and what can we do to make it better. Going the rabbit hole dive back into the middle schools and K through twelve education, finding out what potentials are are. Lying in those those halls of. Of of growth, really what they are, and how we can support that and support these high schools and these no schools. With our with our certificate programs, with the stuff that we're made out of. And um the whole the whole campus staff, faculty. Everybody here. Students. Yeah, I know I'm forgetting one. No, I, you know, we're a team. Thank you for what you do and how you support us all. We're just, we're just here to listen to all the good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jean, are you up there?
I'm here.
There you are.
Yes. Uh, I would just like to say how much I appreciate. How effective our Ames team is in monitoring for new and changing technologies. Either to start a a a new program or modify a class. So that our students truly are staying abreast of the new technologies. Uh, is. I I I think we've re-done a good job of uh. You know, adopting new programs uh to meet market needs and student interests. So, good job. Keep it up. That's all.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Um, yeah, I certainly want to echo what everyone here has said. It's certainly all very, very valid and and true. Uh. And uh. I'm just, again, honored to be a part of this. I I know we've heard today uh. And and we we continue to hear about how we continually are monitoring. And Jean, you kind of alluded to this. Uh, all of our courses and everything so that we are staying on top of it. That's uh. One of the things that I think I appreciate most about Ames is how we try to stay ahead of it and. And try to be on the leading edge of uh of uh not necessarily all the wow courses. Like aviation and things like that, but um even our basic courses are are English and our math and our humanities and all our basic stuff. Um, the fact that we are uh working so hard. Um. And 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 working with uh District Six and the other districts around us. Um. From when we get our early high school students uh that we make that available to them. That we continually try to improve that program so that um. Uh, again, our students are on the cutting edge and uh um I I just think it's fantastic. When I hear our reports like uh from our staff association, student government uh um ECA. I I always am impressed by what. Our students are doing to help improve Ames. They're not just letting all of. You out there, uh, they're not just letting cabinet and staff. Uh, their instructors and everybody else do all the work and they're out there participating in their education. And as in life, I think the the more you participate in it, the more you get out of it. So I think um encouraging them to do that, which we obviously do, I think is huge. Um, in in one of the things that we provide for them. Uh, and those are things that are hard to measure. Uh, I mean, obviously, the fact that we can look at our budget and everything else and pat ourselves on the back. And and Pat Chuck on the back and Pat, all those on the back who came before us, who gave us this incredible institution. And they helped to bring it forward in the incredible shape that it's in. Um, you know, we all work hard to to maintain that and to build on that, and we can measure that. But the fact that we're figuring out all these other things that aren't so easily measured, I think is just incredible. So anyway, I've gone on enough, but uh um. Honored to be here. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for all you do for our students uh in uh. Uh, for Ames Community College. So with that, we'll move on to, unless anyone has any other comments. We'll move on. Yes, please.
I just wanted to give another shout-out to Chuck and your team for an amazing presentation and. Appreciate you being such a good caretaker of the funds for Ames, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else? Okay, um, now it's time we can do, uh, we can make comments regarding the meeting itself. Anybody got any comments about the meeting itself? How did we do today? You do okay? Any comments specifically? Nope, okay. Other than the voice from above, yeah, Jean, that was great, but yeah, I wish you had a bad. Other than the voice from above. Yeah, Jean, that was great, but yeah, I wish you had been here to see them. Okay. You're welcome. Okay. Item twelve, executive session as allowed by Colorado, the revised statute twenty four dash six dash four oh two parent four parent B, the board will adjourn into executive session to receive legal counsel. I want to say that we will adjourn to another room for executive session to receive legal counsel. We will return probably via Zoom to this room, so we don't have to move again, but I understand, Jerry, that's doable. So if you want to hang around or whatever, then that's certainly your choice. So but we will formally adjourn from the meeting after we adjourn from the executive session. So with that, I will need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of receiving legal counsel.
I make a motion to go into executive session.
Gene, can I take you for a second? Mark had already made the motion.
Oh, yes, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose, same sign, and that motion carries.